The land acknowledgement, so I'd like to acknowledge that we're on the ancestral territory of the Mi'kmaq people. I'd like to thank the Mi'kmaq people of today for sharing our beautiful lands here in Victor County with our ancestors, whether they came 400 years ago or four years ago. We are all treaty people. Now, before I come to the agenda, we have a whole new high-tech system here tonight, so if you want to ask a question, maybe it's these on there. So instead of putting your hand up, we're gonna turn the light on, so if everybody's lights come on at once, I'm in trouble. Okay, now we'll move right along to our agenda. I don't think we have any changes to the agenda, so we'll ask somebody to move the adoption. Moved by Peter and seconded by?
I'll second it.
By Larry Turner. Okay, are there any questions, additions or deletions to the agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carried. Now, are there any emergency resolutions for council tonight? Don't see any, thank you, we'll skip by that one. Now we come to the minutes from our January the 6th meeting. Are there any errors or omissions to our January the 6th minutes? Go ahead, Counselor Turner.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I'm trying to find it here, but regarding the letter that was sent to the hospital regarding security, increased security and lighting, it was moved by Counselor Boils and seconded by Counselor Bailey to write a letter. It said motion carried, and there was nay votes, Counselor Bailey, Counselor Waden, Counselor Palmer, and it says Counselor Turner. I voted in favor of that, and so I think it was Counselor Thompson that was the nay vote on that. So that's a correction.
Okay, so we'll have that changed to Counselor Thompson and not Counselor Turner. Okay, are there any other errors, omissions, corrections to the minutes of January 6th? Any other errors, omissions, corrections to those minutes? Okay, I don't see any further, so we will approve those minutes as printed with that one change. Now, we have several pieces of correspondence here. The first is from the municipality of Chester regarding the code of conduct concerns. Is there any comments on that piece?
Joe, over here.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead, Joe.
To you, Mr. Chair's person. Just wondering if we could write a letter in support of that letter for, to ask Mr. Lord to look at this unique situation and hopefully rectify it.
Okay, and just for those who didn't get a copy of the letter, so they know what we're talking about, it's the warden of the municipality of Chester, and their municipality has suggested that within the new code of conduct, if any of us were to belong to a certain group in the county and our rural municipality, then we would, shouldn't be involved in the debate or in the voting or whatever on anything to do with that. And that also includes close family members or whatever. If you belong to a certain group, you wouldn't be allowed to vote on that or even to speak on it. So that's what they're getting at, that's in the new code of conduct that we all have to get trained on shortly, but it's already official. But, so do you want to make a motion then, Joe, that we send that letter?
Yes, I do.
Okay, seconded by Peter, basically in support of what the municipality of Chester is saying.
Yes.
Yep. Okay, are there any other comments, questions to do with that motion?
Debbie is.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead, Counselor Waden.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just, I was at that meeting last week with the NSFM and the lawyer discussing this, and I thought that was one of the items they were taking back for further discussion. So I think, it's already being looked at, so I don't really see, I need to write another letter to Chester, I think, let's see what happens with the information they're taking back anyways to look at, because they'll be letting us know. Thank you.
But the motion is to send the letter anyway, I guess, if it's not needed and things turn out the way Chester wants them to, then that'll be fine, but if not, at least we have that letter of support there, yeah.
Letter support, yes.
Yeah. Okay, so again, we have the motion on the floor, moved and seconded. If there's no more comments or quick, go ahead, Counselor Turner.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The clause is, a council member must not give special consideration, treatment, or advantage to an organization or group due to the council member or person closely connected to the council member being involved with the organization or group. So it's saying, it's not that you can't participate, it's just not, you cannot give special consideration. That's the, that's the purpose of that statement. It's about special consideration. It's not about involvement.
Okay, I may be wrong. I thought I'd read something about, about the ability to vote on it, but I could be wrong on that.
I'm just reading as it says here in the, in the code of conduct, so.
Do we, do we agree, I guess is what Counselor McDonald's saying, do we agree with their letter or not, despite whether it involves the voting or not? That's a broad term, special consideration. Would that involve funding? Would that be listed as special consideration? I don't know.
What they're saying is you're not to give special consideration to somebody because, because of being closely connected. I think that's the proper thing, is not to give special consideration because of your, it well says here, being closely connected to a council member, being involved with the organization or group, so. That's the way that I read it. I may be misreading it, but that's from what I understand.
Counselor McHale?
No.
Oh, sorry. Oh, Peter was right, sorry. Go ahead, Peter. These lights are blinding.
Yeah, when we were down at the NSFM, I went to that, the seminar they had on that, in there when they had all them tables with the different things you go to, and this come up at that, and the, they were really, they were really concerned about it. They, and in fact, at that time, they were figuring that like if you were a member off an organization or something, that you even had to turn around and you couldn't vote or nothing on it, you just, that was it. So I don't know how much it changed, but I don't think a letter's gonna hurt to send it to them just to show that, you know, some kind of support.
Okay, now, Counselor McHale.
Thank you very much, Mr. Warden. I guess, I don't understand what's wrong with this either. I interpreted it the same as Counselor Turner did. I don't under, I don't think we, you should be giving special consideration to anybody regardless of your ties or whatever to the organization. And if you are a member of an organization and there's money going to it, I believe that you should step back as a counselor and have a conflict. So while I understand there needs to be some clarity around the language that's being used, the way that I'm interpreting it, or interpretating it, I don't necessarily disagree with it. So I don't think I'll be able to support the letter. Thank you.
That's finding it confusing there, but whose lights, but your light, Joe?
Mine.
That's yours. Okay, go ahead, Ren.
I was gonna say, I was over in Truro last Tuesday along with other fellow counselors, and we had a presentation about the code of conduct, and it was totally different, what they told us over there. They actually said that you might have to step away from that volunteer group, that you can't be involved with them, and things like that. And, and everybody was concerned about that because the majority of people in the room were, were members of certain groups and, and volunteers, had nothing to do with councils. They're volunteering on, on their own time, so. It was a concern, and like Debbie said, that the NSFM was taking that back and going to look at it, but like Joe said, a letter's not gonna hurt to support and, support Chester's request, but what's, what's in that letter is totally kind of a little different than what was told to us counselors last Tuesday. It was more of, you had to step away from the, from your organization and you couldn't have any, any votes or couldn't, couldn't volunteer. You, if you went out, the one thing was, if you went out looking for, for money, you couldn't go out looking for money because you're, they said, because you had the influence, because you're a counselor, so, which is totally not true, so. Anyway, I don't think the letter would hurt.
They, I was just reading from the part of the letter here, the requirement to declare a conflict of interest and recuse oneself from deliberations was seen as potentially limiting elected officials' ability to represent community interests effectively. So they seem to be saying that you have to declare a conflict of interest and recuse yourself from deliberations. So you're, at that point, not because, you know, you make a choice, do I leave that group or do I stay there, but if I stay there, then I'm not allowed to take part in those deliberations. Well, a lot of us belong to different groups, so do we recuse ourselves? And, you know, when the discussion comes up on capital grants or whatever, I guess that seems to be what, what's being said there, but there's different interpretations, I guess, right now around the table as to what's being said. We do have a motion on the table to send a letter, a letter simply supporting the municipality of Chester, and I'm sure that NSFM and others will be looking at this. Oh, go ahead, gain those lights up for me. Go ahead, Counselor Thompson.
Thank you. Just on that, we have members around this room that are on council-appointed boards that are supported through council. Would that have a different protection? It's similar to the conflict of interest, that's why we, one of the benefits of having it set up that way, isn't that correct?
Correct. So a council appointment to the board eliminates the conflict because you're appointed by council. So you can deal with those specific issues of those committees.
Okay, I don't see, oh, go ahead, Counselor Bailey.
Thank you, Warden. I agree with the letter, and I think this does raise a lot of concerns that we shouldn't be really thinking about. I mean, even if we were, belonged to a fire department and they came looking for money, we wouldn't be able to support it. And also, I think in that letter, we should have asked, you know, what is the definite, what is their definition of special consideration? Because that could cover an awful wide area, and we could all, every time we vote in anything, we could be possible in a conflict.
Oh, go ahead, Counselor McHale.
I guess I just need some more information. I don't, I feel like what counselors that attended these sessions are being told and what is written is two different things. And I think, for me, there's a point of clarification there, that what is correct and what is not, and, and what are we going to follow, and, and where's the path moving forward. So for me, there's just not enough information on it. While I understand, I agree with, with certain aspects, I guess, on both sides, but I don't understand, I guess, this is, I think I need some more information. Thank you.
Okay, I think, Counselor Waden, did you have your hand up?
Thank you. Actually, the impression I got last week is that there was concern around the financial, like raising funds and that sort of thing for any organization to belong to. But a person, a counselor would have to use their own common sense to realize that they could be in a conflict if they're approving a grant, for example, for, for an organization, or they're raising money, going door-to-door and using the counselor's name to get the funding as opposed to being a member of the committee, maybe keep away from fundraising altogether and do different aspects for, for that committee they're on. So I really do think they are trying to clarify exactly their position on that, on that, on that item. So I really don't think it's necessary at this point, until we know the clarification coming from the NSFM and their lawyer. I think we should just hold off until we, we actually know what the final clause is going to be.
Okay, go ahead, Counselor Duer.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Well, we could have 12 lawyers in this room tonight, and there'd be 12 different answers to the question. And it's, it's just gonna be a nightmare of the whole thing all the way through. It, too many people putting too much together, and it's just, I heard one counselor say, the common sense part of it, well, I'm pretty well sure the common sense part of it went in the feedbag and got thrown in the river. So anyway, I'm gonna vote for it just because it'd be another area complaining that something's not right. And, and that's why I'm gonna support it. Thank you.
Go ahead, Counselor Donnie Parker.
I'm gonna support the motion. I think it's a good idea to support, so we don't, you know, there's people here that run fire departments and stuff, that all of a sudden they're gonna be considered special consideration, it's gonna throw them out. So I think we should send our support to them and go from there.
Okay, seeing no more hands or lights, we'll call for the vote. So the motion is that we send a letter in support of the municipality of Chester, who sent us the letter, or copy of the letter, been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right? Against, nay?
Nay.
Okay, nays, please raise your hand, just so I have one, two, three nays. Okay? All right, we'll move on then to the next one, which is from Kim Maslin, the Minister of Emergency Management, moving toward consistent and impactful emergency response. So it outlines in there some of the, in the case of emergency, how things should work, I guess. Does anybody have any questions or concerns on that letter from Ms. Maslin? Go ahead, Counselor McHale.
I don't know, am I supposed to turn my light on or not? I guess, I was just wondering if our emergency services, Evan, had a chance to review this, and is, are we in line with this, or just any comments on it? Thanks.
Sure. So currently, that's not the procedure that's, that we follow, that's outlined in that document about opening up our ECC when a, when the PCC goes to level two activation. I think it makes complete sense what's in that letter. I think it speaks to a more cohesive work environment for everybody involved within our regional emergency management group. And so I didn't see anything of concern within that letter whatsoever, and I support it.
Sounds good, because you're the one dealing with it. Okay, are there any other questions about that letter from Minister Maslin? Okay, we don't need a motion, we just received that letter. The next one is from Minister Anita Anand at the federal level, to do with our ferry service from here to PEI. And as you recall, we did send a letter, I don't know how long ago now, two or three months ago, to Minister Anand, and I think it was copied to the representative on the other side, I'm not sure who it is now, but on the PEI side. So this letter, I want to speak slightly, that is very positive. It talks in there several times about a two-boat service, which is really what we were asking for, not to start off the first of the year with one boat. You're sure as heck gonna have something go wrong when you go with one boat. At least if we start with two, and yes, the service is lighter at that time, and the demand is lighter, but if you, it has, the last couple of years, I think started with one and run into problems. So, you know, this letter is, I think, a good letter, I look at it the way it's written, but she also has initiated, I don't know if it's a study or what they call it, of the, what the problems were the last two or three years and how to make sure that doesn't happen again. So I think that's positive, too, not just writing this letter back saying, well, you got a new boat sitting in Victor, now you're all set. You're only all set if you have two. And even then, something can happen to one of them, but, so I think, I look upon that as a very positive response to the letter we sent to Minister Anand. Does anybody want to comment or any questions on that letter? All good? Okay, we'll move right along. We have one more from No Scouse of Power, Evergreen IRP Updated Action Plan and Roadmap. Does anybody have any comments on that letter? Don't see any, so we'll move right along. Thank you. We're now to our public hearing, dangerous and unsightly hearing for 142 Condon Road in Scottsburn. Is there anybody here representing that, that home? That's, who's taking this one tonight? taking this one today? Are you doing it, Brian, or Evan is? Okay, I was looking over all directions for some reason. Go ahead then, Evan.
Thank you very much. So as the warden stated, this property is located at 142 Condon Road in Scottsburg. We initially received the complaint about this property under a dangerous and unsightly bylaw September 28th, 2023, with a site visit taking place September 29th of 2023, so the next day. What we found on the property that you can't see within those pictures is a considerable amount of garbage and other, you know, different car parts, tractor parts, things like that. But more concerning than that, we found some structural issues with the property itself and the foundation. And Adam, I don't know if you can run through a little bit there to show them the foundation and the back wall? Okay, I'll keep talking. So we initially sent the notice to the property owner on November 1st of 2023. We received an email back from him on December 16th of 2023 stating that he was going to take the steps necessary to remediate the location and, and make the home safe again. The owner did clear out some of the items that were throughout the yard, a small amount in the front yard, up until about February 11th, when, of 2024, February 11th of 2024, when that work stopped, and we have had no communication with him since that time. The property continues to deteriorate, it's been left open, and the structural issues are sort of getting worse and worse as time goes on. And so I would ask for council support in order to demolish and remediate the location.
Okay, so that's the situation that we're looking at there. On the, that's right up past the mill, isn't it?
Yes.
Next place past the mill.
Yes.
So we, is somebody going to make a motion then, a resolution? We move, oh, well, let's make the resolution first, and then we can ask the questions. Go ahead councillor.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. And this is quite a nice order for quite a few years, and the house and the door, the door in the house has been open, like the last three or four years, pretty well all the time. So the animals are in and out a lot, and it's certainly dangerous, too, to children that was around there. So, be it resolved by the municipal council of the municipality of County of Picto, the council finds a property located at 142 Condon Road, Scottsburn, tax account 02785994, and further described the attached order in dangerous and unsightly. And be it resolved, the council proceed to section 346 of part 15 of chapter 18 of the Acts of 1998, the Municipal Government Act. Make an order in the form attached heretofore informing part of this resolution, and set order to be signed and issued forthwith on behalf of the county council of the chief administrator, officer of the municipality, or his designate, dated the Picto, Nova Scotia, the 3rd day of February 2025. I so move this resolution. I ask for a secondary.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, and the copy of the order to the owner of the house is there, and it talks about demolish all, all buildings and structures which are in ruinous or dilapidated condition, leaving the site in an unsafe condition, to remove all derelict vehicles, vehicle parts, and various equipment, and to remove all debris and garbage. Work to be completed and done within 30 days of the date of this, of the service of this order. So that's what's required, I guess, of the owner, and if not, then the county does such, and, and the bill for that is put on, you know, on, on with the property that it's owed to. So are there, councillor McDonald had the question there earlier, I think. Maybe I'm wrong?
No, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Just one quick one, and I probably know the answer, but it's vacant, nobody in,
Yeah, that's correct. It's a vacant home.
And councillor Thompson?
Thank you. Just one question, on that order, it doesn't say secure the well, either fill it in or secure the well. Is, can that be part of the work? Is that what you normally do anyways?
Sure. Typically, that's covered under the leave the site in a safe condition. That would be one of the things that we would look at.
Okay, and did I see, oh, I see a light on here, Peter.
Yeah, I just wondering, like, how do they get moved up the list? I mean, we got one in Hillside of Murray Road that's been in there for, who, must be eight years now, and there's no floor in it, people are going in it, they're sleeping in it and everything, where nobody's doing nothing about it. But it's not even, this one's not even half as bad as that one, so I was just wondering.
That's a fair point. I'll take that back to the team. I'm not entirely sure about that case, specifically councillor Boils, but certainly if it's in the same repair, it'll, it'll come to council.
Okay, and councillor DeWor.
Thanks, Mr. Warden. Are the taxes paid on this property, or not paid? Usually, there's some, something about what it's owed in taxes.
So when I bring these orders to council, I, I don't look at the tax account, because for me, it's, it's not a relevant piece of information, but I'm, I'm not sure, maybe Karen, you'd be able to look that up, or we'd be able to get that for you.
Okay, any further comments or questions on the motion? We have the motion on the table moved and seconded. Don't see any, so we're going to call the vote on that. All those in favour?
Aye.
Against? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Okay, we're moving along here, coming to our proclamations, but before I get to the proclamations, I want to welcome our new, new MLA for Picto Centre, Danny McGilvery, sitting back there in the corner. He snuck in on me, I didn't notice him. So welcome, Danny, and, and your new role is, Danny's actually an assistant now to, to Minister Lor, who's our Minister of Municipal Affairs, so we know who to go see. Thank you for being here tonight with us, Danny. So we'll move on to the proclamations. The first proclamation is the African Heritage Month in Nova Scotia, so I'm going to read that proclamation. Whereas Nova Scotia has more than 50 historic African Nova Scotian communities, with a long, deep, and complex history dating back more than 400 years. Whereas Nova Scotia is home to 52 historic African Nova Scotia communities, with a rich and complex history that spans more than 200 years. African Nova, African Heritage Month is a time to honour this heritage and celebrate the culture, achievements, and contributions of Black Nova Scotians, both past and present. It is a moment to recognise the strength of our shared legacy and the brilliance that continues to inspire future generations. And whereas this year, African Heritage Month embraces the provincial theme, Legacy in Action, celebrating Black brilliance. The theme celebrates the enduring legacy of Black Nova Scotians, paying tribute to the community's resilience, achievements, and impact throughout history. It reflects the brilliance within the community, the stories we share, the lessons passed down by our elders, the rhythms that drive progress, and the powerful ability to honour the past while shaping the future. The theme also aligns with the culmination of the Second United Nations International Decade for People of African Descent, 2025 to 2034. Over the next past decade, this global initiative has emphasised empowerment, leadership, and increased awareness of the contributions of people of African descent worldwide. The decades focused on justice, recognition, and development mirrors the progress and presence of African Nova Scotians in all facets of society. Therefore, be it resolved that the municipality of the County of Picto proclaim February as African Heritage Month, and we encourage all residents to partake in events and celebrations taking place throughout the county and province, dated the 3rd day of February 2025 in Picto, Nova Scotia, signed by myself, Robert Parker, Warden. I did attend the celebration today in Glasgow at Summer Street Industries, which was celebrating, you know, one day, but they were emphasising that it's for all year long, not just for one day, but marking African Heritage Month. And you'll notice in the front of our building, when you come in, they are, both flags are flying half-mast, of course, in Jim's memory, but the Pan-African flag is there alongside of our, I believe, the Canadian flag. And, no, municipal flag, okay. I didn't, didn't look close enough, I was looking at the other one. But, so that's there to show our support, you know, for all of the African Nova Scotian peoples in, in Picto County. Although most of them don't live in our municipality, we still have a lot of love and respect for them. And I wanted to show you that this is the new poster that came out, that they gave us today. So we have several of those that I gave to Shelley, and will be put up in our building here in various places, so that people see them. Well-done poster, for sure. So with that, we don't vote on, on the proclamations, so we'll, as soon as I get my notes together here, we'll move along to the next proclamation. We're gonna, I'll read this proclamation, and then we're going to do a signing here at the table at the front, or in the centre. Whereas the First Women's Institute in Nova Scotia was formed in 1913 in Salt Springs, Picto County. Whereas for 112 years, the Women's Institutes have provided Nova Scotia women with opportunities to improve the quality of life for families, for their local and global communities, through community service and involvement, education, and personal and leadership development. Therefore, be it resolved that I, Robert Parker, Warden for the municipality of the County of Picto, do hereby proclaim this week of February the 16th to the 22nd, 2025, as Women's Institute Week in Picto County, dated this 3rd day of February 2025 in Picto, Nova Scotia, signed by myself, Warden Robert Parker. So I did want to make a couple mentions before we go to the centre. I want to make sure I get the names right here, that Picto County is in a powerful position, we'll call it right now, with the Women's Institute here locally. We have with us, and I would ask them to stand when I read their name out, the district head, Christine McKenzie. Hi Christine. And the provincial head of the Women's Institute, Margie Taylor. Margie. And the federal representative, federal head of the Women's Institute, Lynn McLean. We have a lot of power in this room. If you want to get things done, these are the people to see. And I, you know, we'll mention as always that the Women's Institute does so much that we're not even sometimes aware of within our communities, and they have a, a strong, strong history, 112 years, starting in Salt Springs. And I want to thank them for all the work they do in our communities each and every year. And I understand you, yeah, you can go ahead and be seated, I might go on forever. It's, I think, special to, that we mark this each year, so, you know, we don't just take people for granted, I guess, and our institutes and services for, for granted. But what is your membership right now? You have a rough idea?
For the province?
No, here in Picto County.
Hundred?
About a hundred, yeah, which is pretty impressive, yeah.
Six branches.
Six branches, yeah. Three here tonight. Well, I thank you for all the good work again that you do, and we're going to go ahead and make this, sign this in the centre here. I don't know who's coming up to help sign it, but we'll get there.
Yeah, that's great.
Mr. Warden, I'd like to say that I think the majority of the women there are from District Five, so thank you, thank you very much for coming.
And three.
Welcome.
Now, we'll move right along with our agenda, folks. So we're on to business items not requiring action. And the first one is the New Scotland Business Incorporated, the January Report. Are there any questions or comments on New Scotland's report? Seeing none? Oh, I missed somebody?
Me.
Oh, you, looking for a light, yeah? I need to see the light, I need to see the light.
I just have the question on the other activities. All are, isn't all the land in the park sold? Is this other land that we're talking about, or is any of the members that are on that board?
Randy, do you have an answer? You've been around for a while.
Been around for a while, yeah. What was again?
Just if there's more, still more lands available.
Everything's not sold yet, nothing, we don't have an agreement with all the lots right yet, but we do have supplementary agreements, or they're doing their due diligence right now. And once that's done, we're hoping that all of them will be sold, so. But, but they're not sold to date. So something could happen, that that land comes back out and be, be available again, so.
And their CAO said he maybe can add a little to that.
Also, it's, while the focus is on the park, there are companies that do approach that are not necessarily looking for the park, so it's identifying other lands that may be within the town of Glasgow or in the rural municipality that would suit for those businesses.
Okay, thank you. All right, no other questions for the park. Then we'll move on to the business items requiring action. And the first is councillor Boils, a request for tax sale update. Go ahead councillor Boils.
Yeah, I called down and talked to the staff and everything about the, you know, the tax sales, and my God, we hadn't even been on since long. And the last time I asked for a report, we were going to have, at the end of January, it, it was going to be done. And now we're, we're in, into February. I'm just wondering, the lawyers we have, I guess they turned down, we had, well, one time, I think it was 60-some properties, and then they give it to the lawyers to, to do the, the title searches, and then they come back, and they've only got 21 done. do the, the title searches, and then they come back, and they've only got 21 done. And so it begs the, the, the answer to, does this law firm know anything about title searches? And as they, you know, talking to some of the staff, it's at one time, it was sort of them that did these, talked to the lawyers and that, but they don't even know the lawyers anymore. I mean, when we had Mac, Mac, and Mac, I mean, they, they could talk to the lawyers, call up, get this stuff done that was done. But now it's, I guess the CEO turns around and does all that, but it just seems that there's something wrong, that the, you know, that these, these tax sales, I mean, for to do the title searches and to say, you know, what ones are going up, and then do what they have to do as far as advertising and that, and get it over with. But people are asking, and every time I ask a question, I get a different time it's gonna happen, so it's, it's very concerning, so that's why I brought it here tonight.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Boils. I'll let our CEO respond to that.
Sure. So we follow the same process, so we do send them away for title search. A batch came back, so we've moved those along. We've identified more properties that have been sent through, so we're at the point of 60-day notices going out, so those are being prepared by staff to be sent out. So there's a legislative process that has to be followed, and all those steps have to be ticked off, so.
So go ahead, Counselor Boils.
Yeah, but, you know, and I've gotten to the staff and asked them, and they're, they're saying like, when they had it with Mac, Mac, and Mac, they knew the lawyers, went and talked to them, and bingo, they could have this all done and everything, and we know there's a process to have it done, but it just seems it's not being done. And like, asked them the other day, everything was the 21, and going to be, they figured that, you know, it'd like to be May now, before that we would have a tax sale, but there's another loophole popped up. And because of the other loophole, it changed everything, so they don't know where they're at with it. So is that, what's to that, Brian?
I'm not, I'm not aware of any loophole.
Okay, well, that's what I was told, that there's a loophole and...
I think if you have questions, they should be directed to me, not to...
Well, that's from just a direction to you.
Right? I'm not, I'm not aware of any loopholes.
Okay. Well, we'll, but, so, I mean, it should be, it's, I mean, it's, why? Why is it taking so long for tax sales? I guess that's, that's the big thing. People are turning around and asking, and then it makes us look kinda, you know, that we don't even know what's going on when we say, yeah, it's gonna be at the end of January, no, it's gonna, now, now it's gonna be May, you know, it's gonna be, I mean, come off it, give us a date and let's get it on with.
Okay, thank you for your questions, and hopefully we can move this along. We're now going to move on to the next one, Viola's Place Strategy, and Brian, you're taking that one. It says here, anyway. See you.
Okay. Nothing more to add than what was in the package covering memo on that. It was reviewed at the Grants Committee, and the Grants Committee recommended it to council, and that we would support the study 1/6 in the next fiscal year. So really, we're looking at a, at this point, just a letter or a commitment to Viola's Place that we will participate.
And I can give a little bit of history to that, I guess without this new code of conduct, I'd be all right, but I sit on the board at Viola's Place, separate from councils, not on the appointment of councils, so I, you know, I'm quite involved and know what's taking place there, and there have been difficulties, not with the people doing the work there and everything, they're doing a great job, but with some of the neighbors, and so the town of Glasgow represents those neighbors. And, and the town of Glasgow does incur a significant amount of cost associated with Viola's Place because it's within their municipality, but the people there are not all from the Glasgow. I always say, you don't see anybody standing out in the corner in Mount Tom or Heath Bell or River John. They migrate to the town, because that's where the help is. And they are helping a lot more, the maximum 21, they're allowed, but they're helping a lot more than that, because there's all kinds of people still living outside, that go there for a shower or a meal or whatever in the daytime, so they're helping a lot more than that 21. But because of the conflict with the town of Glasgow, or with the residents there, it's been suggested several times that perhaps that cost should be somewhat shared with the other municipalities. So this study that's going to be done, that's being proposed, is to look at, compared to other communities across Canada, as to how they do that, share, share some of that load between, as, as a region, rather than just as one municipality. That's not the only thing they're gonna look at, but several other things, and so it was agreed, surprisingly, I might almost say, that, that each municipality would put in $2,000 to help get this study done. Normally, it's done by population, which we would have been paying a lot more, but it was agreed that it'd be done by municipal unit, and hopefully out of that will come not only a way to look at sharing some of the costs, but also better ways that we could be doing things. Not that the people there aren't trying very hard every day, but, you know, it's, it's becoming a bigger and bigger problem, not just in our community, communities right across this country. So we can perhaps learn some from the study as to how better to, to help those people. So that's what, and the Capital Grants Committee did agree to bring it forward here, that we pay our $2,000. Now, do we need a motion for that? Yeah, okay, does somebody want to make a motion that we, that we pay, go ahead, Deputy Warden Murray.
I'd so move that we go ahead with the $2,000 payment out of the tax year's budget.
And I need a second. Second, I beg Counselor Turner. Any questions on what that motion is about? Go ahead, Counselor Waden.
How long this, this strategy's gonna take to, to come to fruition?
It might have been written in there, but I don't remember seeing it, I think they were gonna move with it right away.
And is this something the whole county will be involved in, as, as a unit?
No, I think the, the study is being done for Viola's Place.
Okay.
Not for the municipal governments, and we're, municipal governments are, are gonna fund the study, $2,000 each, and when that comes back, if it has any implications financially on this municipality, it will come here.
Okay.
As it would to the other municipalities.
Okay, just in the right, it was for housing and homelessness strategy across Pictor County, so I just wondered if it was something we were all, all looking at together.
Well, it's together for sure, but because that's where all the, most of the homeless people are, at least being serviced by, so it is, that's why we're being asked to put $2,000 in each, because it does involve everybody. Go ahead.
It's $24.9166, because it's $13,000 plus HST.
$13,000, yeah, I realize that. I was just wondering how long, how long's gonna take to get that strategy together?
I think the, the Chair there, he wasn't able to be with us when they presented it to the Mayor's Warden, but I, I know he's looking for something fairly fast, because they need to solve some of these problems that are having an effect on how they service their residents. Okay, if there's no further questions, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. Was there any vote? Oh, I'll go ahead, thank, we got it recorded then, good. Next one, C, is the naming of Oyster Island. Counselor McDonald, you're on.
Be it resolved, resolution, be it resolved that the municipality of the County of Picto approve the following geographic feature name change. Island located at District One, Merrickhamish, latitude, longitude 45.6317902, negative 6247, 00457, or 451, to Oyster Island, dated at Picto, Nova Scotia, the third day of February 2025, signed by Counselor Joe McDonald, and seconded by Counselor Waden.
Okay, been moved and seconded, we've had this discussion before over the naming of this island, Oyster Island. Is there any questions on the motion? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. Now we're moving along to Counselor McKeel with the Municipal Service Grant in District Three.
Thank you very much, Mr. Warden. Resolution, be it resolved that the municipality of the County of Picto approve the following municipal service grant. District Three, Bayview Community Hall, in the amount of $900 for general expenses, dated at Picto, Nova Scotia, this third day of February 2025, signed by myself, Counselor Darlene McKeel, and seconded by Deputy Warden Wayne Murray.
So second. Okay, you've heard the motion to approve the municipal service grant for District Three. Is there any comments or questions? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carried, and now we'll move to the property tax write-off, Counselor Waden.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Be it resolved that the municipality of the County of Picto approve the following write-off on taxes, the same having been reviewed and approved by the Financial Services Committee. Account number 08249237, Martin Derrick, $86.47, mobile home removed. Number 01544691, Foshner Gerald, 56554, PVSC account deleted, and the mobile home removed. Number 0935436, Robert Mason, $271.17 for an account error. And 0, 10563951, unknown owner, $1,362.62 for an account error. Number 10816556, Chad Boudreau, $469.24, PVSC has no information on what happened to this mobile home. And number 09156011, Billy Joseph Bonin, $208.01, mobile has been relocated, for a total of $2,965.05, dated at Picto, Nova Scotia, this third day of February 2025, signed by myself, Counselor Waden, and seconded by Counselor Ron Bailey.
So second. Okay, moved and seconded, those right, property tax write-offs that have already been approved by the Finance Committee. Are there any questions on those? Go ahead, Counselor Boils.
Yeah, these mobile homes that were saying that they, they moved them off, and when they're gone, there's no way to turn around and tell them where they're gone, so we just write it off. So all these mobile homes that are on this land, they belong to somebody else, like if I had a piece of land and it had a mobile home on it, took it off and said, no, it's gone, I don't know where it's gone, does that mean I could get a write-off for the mobile home taxes? Or would I still owe it because I had the, I own the property too? That's just, it, it, it's very confusing to me, the way they're, they're doing this with mobile homes.
I should leave it to Karen or Brian, but I think I did hear it say before that in most of these cases, the land is owned by somebody else and not by the person that owned the mobile home, so it's pretty hard to chase it down, but is that right, Brian or Karen?
That's generally.
That's generally what happens, is it?
They've changed the way they assess the amount.
Changed the way they assess those, so...
No, these are oldest, oldest, older assessments.
Yeah.
Old taxes, or old arrears, and now they've changed the way they assess the landowners now as being assessed for the mobile home.
Okay, so then these shouldn't come forward against similar to this then?
I'll never say never.
No, but less likely. So it, it has changed then, Counselor Boils, to the fact that, that mobile, no matter who owns it, is charged against the, the landowner.
Yeah, charged against the landowner, but I mean, if, if their mobile home is taken off, that's, that's, that's my question, is if the same person owns the land as the mobile home, and then they take the mobile home off it, it's still, the guy that owned it, that's his taxes, right?
These ones have no land.
Yeah, okay. But is, is there any that we do that on? Is there any that we turn around and that we, you know, wrote off that...
That there's land with them?
Yeah.
No.
Okay.
Okay, if there's no further questions on, on the tax write-off one, we'll move to the tax exemption policy update, Counselor...
We didn't vote on it.
Oh, sorry, we didn't vote on that one. So that was the tax, the property tax write-off is the one we're voting on. We have a move or a second?
Yeah.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. Now we'll go to the tax exemption policy update, Counselor Bailey.
Thank you, Warden. Resolution, be it resolved that the municipality of the County of Picto adopt the following policy with respect to tax exemption and tax reduction. It's policy number 20250203. Not gonna read them all, I'll just read the ones that are being added tonight. And they are, and I think one might been, already been done, but I'm gonna say the five of them. The Moore Lodge IOF Hall in, in Thorburn, on the Thorburn Road, the whole of the land building at Thorburn, off the owner. I think this one's already been added, the Trustees of Rebecca Lodge. I believe that one was already added. I'll say it, it's land and building at East River West Side Road, Sunny Bray, and again, it's a whole building and land. Trustees, the IOF Hall in, where am I at here? In, no, okay, trustees, got it, in Springville. And again, it's a whole of the land and buildings in Springville. The River John Lines Club, land and building on 2724 West Branch Road, River John, again, it's a whole of land and buildings. And IOF Hall, land and buildings at the 2747 River John Station Road, River John, and again, it's a whole of the buildings and the land in River John. Dated at Picto, Nova Scotia, this third day of February 2025, signed by myself, Ronnie Bailey, seconded by Counselor Waden.
Okay, moved and seconded, that we add those five that Counselor Bailey just read off there, we add them to our tax exempt list. Are there any questions on that resolution? Go ahead, Counselor Thompson.
Thank you. Just, I was going through the list of tax exempt properties, and the, there's a, one there for John David Lee's Leased Lansdowne Outdoor Recreation Development Association. It's still on the Schedule A. Should that be, is that, is that still in operation, or what, what's going on there? Like...
Yeah, those, those were actually taken off previously.
The council wrote those off three weeks ago.
Yeah.
Policy was updated.
Yeah, so the policy was updated, but just not, the, yeah, so...
That's, that's for anybody wondering, that's the Lord, a form of Lord of Property, but I believe they went back to private ownership.
Correct.
Or they were always private ownership, but they had some tax exemption. Okay, we didn't have a vote on that one yet, but it was moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. And now we move along to Counselor Turner with the hospitality policy.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Resolution, be it resolved that the municipality of the County of Picto adopt the following policy with respect to hospitality. I'm not gonna read the whole thing, it's five pages long, and there's no significant change to it, so everybody has a copy in their package, and it's policy number 2025-02-04. So it's signed by myself, dated at Picto, Nova Scotia, this third day of February 2025, signed by myself, Counselor Larry Turner, seconded by Counselor David Thompson.
Okay, moved and seconded then on our hospitality policy, and I think it just required that we renew that on a regular basis, so it's not, not, no changes in that, I don't believe.
Correct, it's just reaffirming the policy.
Same as we've always had, we have to have that policy updated now and then. So if there's any questions on the hospitality policy? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. And now we're moving down to Counselor Waden, the council expense policy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Be it resolved that the municipality of the County of Picto adopt the following policy with respect to conference, seminar, training, attendance, and expense reimbursement. Number 20250206, and again, I'm not gonna read the whole thing, because the review requirements that the municipality's audit committee shall review the expense annual summary report by October 31st of each year, and by the January 31st immediately following a regular election held under the Municipal Elections Act, council shall review this policy and, following a motion by council, either re-adopt the policy or amend the policy and adopt the policy as amended. So we're just, again, we're not amending the policy, we're just following through with the same policy we had, dated at Picto, Nova Scotia, this third day of February 2025, signed by myself, Counselor Deborah Waden, and seconded by Counselor Ronald Bailey.
Want to bring them up?
Oh, sorry, second.
Dave Remen.
I thought she was gonna give you an elbow. Okay, so we've heard the, again, this is a housekeeping one, I guess you call it, the council expense file... Okay, so we've heard the, again, this is a housekeeping one, I guess you'd call it, the council expense policy. But if anybody has any concerns, now would be the time to bring them up, I guess. So are there any questions on the council expense policy? Seeing none or hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carried. And now I'll come along Deputy Warden Murray with an appointment to the Picto Watershed Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Resolution, be it resolved that the municipality of the County of Picto approved the following appointment to the Picto Watershed Committee. Robert Landill of District Number Three, dated at Picto, Nova Scotia, the third day of February two thousand twenty-five. Also moved this resolution and seconded by Council McKeel.
So seconded.
Okay, moved and seconded that we appoint Robert Murray, was it? Landill, sorry, lost my place here, to the Picto Watershed Committee. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carried. Now we're getting into the lengthy one. So this is the resolution for the first reading of the municipality of Pitts County's Land Use Bylaw and Municipal Land Use Strategy. So we've been working on this for, what, a couple of years? And we had a series of public meetings on this, and there was lots of chance for input on our website and other venues. But at this point, I'm going to call on Council Turner to read the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Resolution, first reading. Take notice that the following bylaw will be presented to council for second reading on March third, twenty twenty-five. Be it resolved that the municipality of the County of Picto adopt the following land use bylaw and municipal planning strategy. Dated at Picto, Nova Scotia, this third day of February twenty twenty-five. Signed by myself, Larry Turner, and seconded by Council Darla Keel.
Okay, so this information has been out there, like I say, for quite some time, and we've had feedback. And we have Ian with us tonight. Ian, are you going to give us something on what the changes were anyway to the initial? Go ahead, Ian.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair. So as the warden mentioned, these drafts were taken out to the public before Christmas and over the holidays. Chance for feedback on the drafts. We collated everything we heard during that engagement phase and put it in a what we heard and policy direction report. So that's all summarized and was circulated, it's available on the website as well. Planning Advisory Committee considered the draft feedback in January and made a number of, directed us to make a number of changes to those drafts in response. And that has been done, and you have before you now a recommended draft from PAC, from Planning Advisory Committee. If you'd like, I can summarize some of those changes that were made.
I think that's important, because last time we saw this was as a group when we met with you earlier.
Absolutely, yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. So, so some of the big moves, I suppose, in, in, lots of typos and clarity added, typos corrected, clarity added to the documents. But some of the major changes that have a substantial effect on the drafts are, there is a new rural mixed-use G-two zone. This arose primarily out of response from landowners in, in the Scotsburn area concerned about, they were put in sewer service communities, but had, they had commercial livestock operations and were concerned that those were going to be impacted. So Planning Advisory Committee directed us to create a new rural mixed-use zone that provides a transition between those rural general areas, the G-one areas, and some of the more developed communities, the service centers. So this new rural mixed-use zone applies in between sewer serviced areas. We've also applied it as a buffer around sewer serviced areas, since this zone doesn't allow certain industrial uses, so there's a bit of a transition there that goes from the very rural context to the, to the more urban serviced context. So that's a fairly substantial change. Another change is that we had a request from the town of New Glasgow to consider protecting their watershed of Forbes Lake. They had a number of specific requests that Planning Advisory Committee directed us to accommodate, at least the spirit of it, within the framework of the document as, as we have. So the new drafts apply the shoreline zone to the entire Forbes Lake watershed. That zone is fairly protective. It limits most uses to residential and a few supportive uses, so protecting that water quality. The drafts also increased the water course buffer from, sorry, from Forbes Lake, the distance that, that, that buildings have to be from the lake, and specifies that that buffer cannot be reduced, unlike other water course buffers in the drafts. So providing that protection. We added a policy to enable council to consider dense residential development in the rural mixed-use zone, the community core zone, and the rural commercial zone. So previously, there was limits on how much residential council could consider. There wasn't a mechanism necessarily to do, for example, small apartment buildings in the community core zone that was, that wasn't a bit cumbersome. So we've added policy to, to support that, to enable that. We, in the, in the, in the public drafts, there was provisions in the land use bylaw related to coastal setbacks and coastal erosion. However, it wasn't well explained in the plan, and people, we heard feedback that people thought the drafts didn't speak enough about coastal erosion. So that was added as preamble to the plan. We enhanced the engagement policy that's in the plan. This is coming out of comments from, from, oh, geez, where, oh, from the municipality's Clean Nova Scotia Partners, to expand engagement with Picto First Nation whenever you're doing an amendment to the plan. And let me see, and then on the land use bylaw side of things, again, minor edits and corrections throughout. And responded to a lot of the, the feedback from members of the public, including increasing the size of a accessory building before permits necessary, clarifying that stormwater management plans must be based on the total footprint of all buildings, increasing the size of permitted standalone accessory solar collectors, so solar that's providing for a building or a particular site rather than feeding into the grid, actually increasing the size that you're permitted to have if it's not on a building. We clarified provisions around topsoil removal. To clarify that this was, you know, that removal incidental to activities on the site are permitted. The intent here is to limit commercial removal of topsoil in the agricultural soils. We refined some requirements related to parking lots to make them less onerous. We updated the size for hobby livestock farms. So this is small, smaller livestock buildings, meant for a hobby scale. They're widely permitted, but because they're widely permitted, there's a cap on the size of them. It was seventy square meters. In response to the public, Planning Advisory Committee increased that to a hundred. We also refined the water course buffer, so that in the drafts, there is a minimum horizontal distance from water courses. In the public draft, that was a blank at all water courses, which could lead to issues related to very small ones, or having to interpret whether something was a water course, or man-made, or something like that. So to avoid any challenges there, instead, we've mapped major water courses based on the Nova Scotia topographical database, and specified that water courses are measured from them, so there's, from those on the map. So there's no confusion about whether something is subject to the water course buffer or not. We added private clubs and restaurants to use as permitted in the shoreline zone in response to public comments. Added an ability for industrial uses to be closer to each other, and removed a prohibition on signs attached to natural objects. And finally, we updated the definitions of drinking establishment and restaurants to ensure that they are more clearly differentiated. And then there was a number of mapping changes to the zoning. So again, I mentioned the Forbes Lake one, the watershed being within the S-one zone, shoreline zone. There was a number of small zoning changes for individual properties that people had highlighted, either in existing use that we had missed, that we had missed in our initial zoning, or, you know, where they had clear plans going forward that they wanted to make sure were accommodated. So things like, you know, residential developments that are at the permit stage now, and we want to make sure we capture them. So there's a number of small tweaks to zoning here and there to do that. There was a few removals of the shoreline zone, one at the intersection of Black River Road and Picto Landing Road. We had put it around a, what we thought was a lake, but was actually a man-made pond, and the property owner brought that to our attention, so that zone was removed there. And then also from Olding Island in Miragamish Harbour. We had put the shoreline zone on that island because it had, had a subdivision on it that was never built. And we, so we picked up the subdivision aspect and, and applied the zone based on our criteria, but the subdivision was never built, and the, and the property owners didn't feel like that zoning was appropriate, so that was removed as well. The other thing, we caught the Salem, so Logan had brought up that the town, or sorry, the municipality had extended sewer in the Salem Road area. And so we updated the zoning to, to put that in a, in a service zone, the community core zone. And then, you know, the biggest changes were, of course, applying that rural mixed-use zone, first of all, specifically to those properties along Scotsburn Road, where there had been concerns about the impact of, of zoning on commercial livestock. The new, the new rural mixed-use zone accommodates that and reduces those, you know, the chance of any concerns there. But then, as I mentioned, also more widely applying that rural mixed-use zone as a buffer around serviced areas and as a transition between the rural areas and the serviced areas. So that is, in a high level, the, the major changes that have happened since these drafts would have been last seen by council.
Thank you, Ian, and just a couple of things before we move along. Council Turner, I remember, couldn't be with us the night of the meeting because we had other meetings going on at the same time. And I brought up, and the answer was sort of this mixed-use one in the Abercrombie area. Do you want to speak to that, Council Turner, what you were looking for at the time? That perhaps that area shouldn't all be rural general?
Yeah, as, as Council representing District Eight, which has a lot of suburban area in it, I think we're very concerned, and the residents are concerned about urban creep. And so that's what I was looking for, was to have the residential portions of, of those district, those portions of District Eight to be protected. Abercrombie, Westful Road, Green Hill, Alma, those areas, so. That was my concern, I wasn't able to be here, I was at a climate change meeting, so we're just looking for those things to be addressed.
So is there a way to address that, Ian? Because it is a mixed, down the Granton Road isn't very urban, but a lot of the rest is quite urban in District Eight. And so I think the, I just want to make sure that was heard, I guess, more than anything.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. So I am, sorry, I'm just bringing up my zoning map here to look. So this is the area, sorry. So this is, so, so, sorry, the area in Abercrombie. Remind me where again?
From the Abercrombie and Glasgow border.
Yep.
Down towards Granton, that area. Also, Westful Road, and there's a commercial district on Westful Road, but there's also residential areas on Westful Road as well. So that, the distinction has to be made there. Mount William. And the other area that are represented is out towards Alma and Green Hills. But in terms of Alma, the highway number four goes through there, so there's commercial development allowed there. But up on the side of Green Hills, it's, it's all residential, so looking for, have that protected as well.
Gotcha, so, thank you, Mr. Chair. So the, yeah, so the areas of, of Abercrombie and Alma that are sewer serviced, were in the, in the public draft, were in the, primarily the community core zone, and that's been maintained in this draft, unless they were commercial or whatever, then they were in the commercial zoning. But what we have done in this case is, these are areas where that new G-two rural mixed-use zone has been applied as a buffer around these areas to avoid, you know, encroachment of things like industrial uses, but also recognize that the areas that aren't sewer serviced are more rural in nature, you know, large lots. There might be agricultural activities, that kind of thing. So there is a substantial application of that, of that G-two zone around the serviced areas. It's not, you know, the full area of your district by any means, but it is an extension of that, of that, of that protection.
Okay, and perhaps, Ian, you, there was sent out to us this afternoon, two new additions. One had to do with industrial, I think, at the old Westbury site, and the other had to do with the Picto watershed. You want to talk to those two specifically before we get into the rest?
Do, yeah, I can certainly do that, Mr. Chair. So, yeah, we did circulate a last-minute memo today on two issues. One was the industrial property on East River Road. The portion of the property is the Westbury mine site. But it's a trucking repair, there's a number of businesses there.
I think it's the East River West Side Road, I think.
Yeah.
East River Road is in the town, I think.
Yes, sorry, my apologies. And the, the, we had, we had, we had applied the industrial zoning to a portion of the property, and there's an image included in the memo that was sent around. The intention here had been to capture the existing industrial use and allow for some small, you know, some, some expansion of it in the future. When Planning Advisory, or sorry, when we took it out to the public, there was some concerns about the area where we had applied the industrial zone, that it, that it abutted behind people's, or, along, behind houses, rather. And Planning Advisory Committee reviewed this concern and had directed us to speak with the property owner to figure out what their plans were and see if we could maybe refine that zone boundary. So we did speak with the property owner. It took a little while, it's partly why the memo was, was so last minute. And the property owner reviewed the zoning and, and felt that it was an appropriate extent for that zone. So, you know, they, they did want to see some room for expansion and felt that that was, as we have it drawn, is an appropriate area to do so. So their request is to, to keep it as drafted. So I think that puts the ball in, in council's court a little bit in terms of whether we want, whether you, it's at your pleasure to, to leave it as drafted, as shown in the, in the memo, or to make adjustments to that boundary in response to the concerns about abutting houses. The other issue that we flagged in, in that memo is that we did reach out to neighboring municipalities as part of the draft engagement to let them know that drafts were available, and to invite their comment on, on areas of shared municipal interest. And we did hear back from, well, of course, the town of New Glasgow, which I addressed previously. But we also heard back just last week from the town of Picto. And they raised concerns over their, their wellfields. So the town has drilled wells for their, for their potable water supply. Much of the wellfield area is within the town, but some of it does extend into the municipality on the north and east side of the town of Picto. We had mentioned that in the drafts, that those existed. But without formal comment and direction from the town, we had left it as a, we'll cooperate with the town in the future to figure out what we should do with these. Well, we heard from them, and they would like to see some stronger protection. Well, we heard from them, and they would like to see some stronger protection for those wellfield areas. They specifically requested source water zone. We don't have that in the current draft. So instead, we're, like the New Glasgow Forbes Lake situation, we're suggesting applying the shoreline zone to those wellfields. That would restrict, again, uses to primarily residential on larger lots, which provides protection for those wellfields, and to establish policy that those properties won't be rezoned to, to other zones without being in compliance with a source water protection plan provided by the town. So again, in your memo, there is a map that shows those lands that would be affected, those lands in this blue shoreline S1 zone, to the north and east of the town of Picto boundary would be affected. They're primarily undeveloped or, or existing residential uses on, on large lots. So those are the two that we've brought forward for potential direction ahead of first reading, because just as a reminder that once we give first reading to the documents, or once council gives first reading to the documents, any substantive changes would require first reading again and re-advertising a public hearing and that sort of thing. So anything we can do now ahead of first reading, if, if it's at council's pleasure, would be helpful.
Okay, so it sounds like the industrial zoning one wouldn't require any changes, it's accepting it as what it was, from the person, from the perspective of the owner of, of those lands, not from, necessarily from the perspective of the homeowners.
Correct.
Who we, we don't, haven't heard from, though neither on these proposals that have been out there for quite some time now. But the one with the town of Picto and the, and the wells, does that require us to make a, a change before we go to first reading?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I would, yeah, I would request a motion from council, and there's a variety of edits in there. There's a suggested motion in the, in the memo, that to make those amendments, you know, then you'll have made them. We'll, we'll carry out the actual changes to the documents after tonight, but they'll be, have been made from a, from a procedural point of view. And then when you give the documents first reading, it would be to the documents as amended.
As amended. So that potential motion is there to do with the town of Picto wellfields?
Yes.
So does somebody want to make that motion?
I will.
You will? Okay, thank you, Counselor McKeel, and we need a secondar for that motion.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Ronnie Bailey. Okay, any discussion on the motion to do with the, protecting the town of Picto wellfields? See, go ahead, Counselor Royall, sorry.
Yeah, I, I just, well, I got a little, about protection, I, I'm just, it's, it's not sitting right with me that, you know, we're seeing Glasgow wants protection, Picto wants protection, I mean, I can see Abercrombie, yeah, that's good, you turn around, protection, but what about the other places? What about, you know, we got District Nine, there's like these places there need protection, we got the other, the other, Counselor, sure, I mentioned, there's certain places in there that need protection too. So I, I don't know, I, I'm not in favor of the whole thing, because, see, even the premier's not in favor of this, telling people how they gotta have their land or whatever.
Okay, it, it was put out to all of the other municipalities, I believe, if they had any comment on, and this comment came in very late. The comment on Forbes Lake from the Glasgow came in quite some time ago, but this only came in the last couple of days. I think that's why it's being kind of added on here tonight. But we do want to protect, you know, water sources for whatever town it is, especially like, in the case of Forbes Lake, I'll say, especially because a lot of our water comes from Forbes Lake, so we don't want to see it polluted. And I think, you know, these fellows tried to find a happy medium, I think, between just banning everything and what we can perhaps live with, that hopefully we'll keep the water clean there. And the town of Picto's concerns are the same, I think, you know, if we allowed something industrial or whatever to go into that area where their wellfields are. But we did not hear from the other municipal units, but I think the request was made to them all, or reached out to them all?
Yes, thank you. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, the, the letters were sent to all neighboring municipalities, all the towns, you know, and as well as neighbors outside the boundary. And I will add too, that the, the drink, you know, the, the source water for Trenton and Stillerton do extend into the municipality, and so there is, you know, we didn't hear from them, but there is a policy in the plan recognizing that, and that, you know, in the future, if they want to work with the municipality to come up with some sort of protection, that, that council would consider that. So, you know, that's going to have to be driven by them. I can't say what their protections they need for their water supplies, so if we hear from them in the future, if you hear from them in the future.
We can still deal with it in the future.
Yeah.
But for now, we have a motion on the floor to do with the Picto situation with their wellfields. Is there any other comments? Oh, darling, you even told me. Go ahead, Counselor.
That's okay, I feel like I need a flag sometimes. Thank you very much, Mr. Warden. I do sit on the Picto watershed committee, and because these areas that we are discussing right now are in District Three, they're in, I guess, in, in the back of Picto, out past Lake Division Road and Central Carable Road, and, and then on the outskirts of Picto, going in down to Bray Shore. So I'm pleased that Picto did comment on these, and that they are now, have some level of, I guess, redressing them within the plan. I mean, it's drinking water, and I think that, that's something that we should definitely have addressed in our plan, so I'm pleased to see it there. Thank you.
Okay, if there's no further comments, I'll call for the vote on that motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carried. Okay, so we're past those two new ones, and you reviewed what changes were made since you met with us last. So I think now we're at the point where it's time to raise questions. If anybody has any questions on the plan or any concerns, it was sent out to us all before the weekend. You had all weekend to read. Oh, who's it laid on? Randy. Heard the seal in the corner, I'm like a horse with the blinders on.
Thank you, Warden. After reviewing the plans that were sent out to us this week, I had some concerns, and one of my major concerns is the inconsistency of the S1 zone along the shoreline. You could have 10 lots that are S1, the next five lots are, are not, or just rural general, or, and then you go on and you have more S1s, then you have a break. So there's no consistency along the shoreline. I think that's a major concern, because if I have a property, I have restrictions, but Wayne has property right next to me, and he doesn't have the restrictions, so, you know, there's too much inconsistency. Plus, I believe that this municipality will have to address at some point whether we're going to do coastal protection or not, and I think that should be part of the, the plan. So I'm going to make a resolution that we, that we eliminate, or that we remove the S1 zone from all the areas with the exception of the watershed areas for the town of Glasgow, town of Picto. And, and at future, future meetings to discuss whether we're going to do coastal protection or not. So I'll ask for a secondar.
I'll second it.
Okay, moved by Randy and seconded by Joe, that we remove the S1, so I guess that becomes G1. If you would just, I, I guess we should get, before we have a vote on that, we should get your feedback to what the possible implications, whatever, are to doing just that. It's, it's a fairly big move for sure to remove, you know, that S1 zone. I know we have to address coastal erosion here at some point, and this was kind of playing around the edges of it, but if we remove the S1 zone altogether, what are the implications of that, Ian?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. So the S1 zone, yeah, I guess, first of all, the question, my question would be not just removing it, but to what? What zone would we put it in? Most of the areas around S1 is G1, so rural general. So presumably that would be the approach, but I would want clarity on that. The implications, I guess, is, there are a number of areas along the coastal shoreline that are S1, and, and the rationale for where it was applied and where it wasn't was lots that fronted on private roads. So that is why you see differences from community to community. The other place that it will affect is it's not just along the shore, like the coastal shoreline, but it is around a number of inland lakes, within 300 meters, 1,000 feet of the lake shore. So just want to be clear whether that's being removed from the lakes as well, or just the coastal areas. And then finally, I think the implication for these properties is that currently, the shoreline zone is a fairly protective zone, in that again, it limits to residential development primarily, as long, as well as some supportive uses like, let me, let me find the shoreline zone here, just a second, so we can be specific. Shoreline zone allows things like accommodations, farmers' markets, marinas, personal service shops, restaurants, retail stores, and dwellings, and then things like parks, cultural facilities. So it's residential and a few supportive commercial and community uses. Changing those lands to rural general, G1, opens those areas to the whole gamut of, you know, everything that's allowed in that G1 zone. Auto-fueling, auto-repair, all those things. So the intention was, again, to kind of recognize those, those private road subdivisions along the coast, areas that we, you know, we can fairly confidently say that they're going to be residential now and into the future. That's, that's why those private roads were created. And so that, the zoning reflects that, so the rural general zone would, would allow a wider range of uses. That would be the, the major consequence, I think, in this situation.
Okay, but in explaining the, what Counselor Palmer brought up, about why you have some and then some not, whatnot, it is due to roads that cross over at those points, and that's why they're not, on the other side of those roads is not S1.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, so we've kept it on the, primarily on the water side of, of the major roads, and then it's for, for properties that front on private roads, so. And that's not to say, you know, it's entirely possible that we missed one or two here, it was, we're doing a large area, starting from scratch with no zoning, and, and so we, I won't promise that we got every little private road subdivision, but we went looking for properties that fronted on a private road and put them in the shoreline zone, you know, feeling confident that those properties were intended to remain predominantly residential into the future, whereas other coastal properties that weren't fronting on a private road, maybe the landowners had, you know, non-residential goals, so we didn't want to presume on those ones.
Okay, so there's a motion on the floor, moved and seconded, that we remove the S1 zone altogether, and I guess go with G1, is that the, that general? Yeah, okay, and I'm looking for comments, questions around the table as to whether people agree or disagree with that. Go ahead, Counselor Wood.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. How does that affect Little Harbor and Kingshead, the, like taking the S1 designation? Are, are we community core or are we G1 rural? Because that is a huge residential area, that's, it's really not a, not an area for development of industry, it's more, it's more residential. And how, how would this, how would this motion affect what, what would happen down in that area?
Get rid of the S1, whether, I guess we have to find out from Ian whether this is S1 or not.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So Kingshead, Little Harbor kind of area you're talking?
Yeah, Black Point, get ringed a little Jordan.
Black Point. So it's a, that area's a mix. Again, some of those areas that are private road subdivisions, a lot of Black Point, for example, are in that S1 zone. But any of those areas that aren't a private road subdivision are in that G1 zone already. So it's, it's a mix in the area. There's a couple of rural commercial, rural, or commercial recreation and park zones, but predominantly your area is a mix of rural general and shoreline, depending on whether there's private roads or not.
Go ahead, Counselor Wood.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So is that saying that industry can develop there?
Through you, Mr. Chair. The, the rural general G1 zone does allow, let me see here. It allows light industrial uses, and it, there's a policy for council to consider heavy industrial uses via the development agreement process, and that process is a council process, it's a public process, and you write up a contract at the end of the day that gets attached to the land. So heavy industrial isn't outright permitted, but it can be considered in the, in the rural general zone.
I just think that's the wrong ruling for down that area. Heavy industrial would not, would not complement that area in the least. I'm just worried, taking the S1 designation off and putting it all to general, that would open the whole area up to development. I think that's risky for my area.
So the S1 zone was meant, I think, to protect some of the waterfront areas from development, or also from overpopulation. You know, we're allowed four or even up to eight, you know, units or whatever, houses per lot in the G1 zone, but only two in the S1 zone. And I think that part of that was to recognize we don't want overpopulation along, along the shore, neither. Then we run into, as we had mentioned one time, sewer problems or other things, is you get more and more population along the shores, so by limiting it to two, I think my fear is removing the S1 totally. I, I know where Randy's coming from on the, you know, the coastal erosion stuff there, but removing the S1 totally could cause some harm in some other areas, like you were talking about, I think, Counselor Wood. But I want to hear from people around the tables who, is this something, this is a major change, we have so many zones here. The S1, it takes in a fair amount of our, of our area, so we don't want to do it too lightly without considering the implications for sure, and I guess Ian's told us of some of those implications. But is any people in favor, against, or want to speak one way or the other on it? Go ahead, Counselor Turner.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My question is in regards to the coastal protection that Counselor Palmer had brought up. So in terms of process and incorporation into our land use bylaw, what would the process be to incorporate? Are they two separate entities? Like if we, if we decided to debate coastal erosion or coastal protection, is that a separate bylaw that we're going to put together, or does it get incorporated into our land use bylaw? Are, are they two separate things?
Go ahead, Randy.
I'll let Ian answer. It could be a secondary strategy, in theory.
Yeah, through you, Mr. Chair. Typically, it is something, yeah, you would see it as an amendment to your planning documents so that you would have, you know, specific coastal provisions. You know, this is a nice clean area, a place to put them is in your planning documents, that's where people are looking anyways for, for development rules. So, yeah, you did probably do that as an amendment to these documents in the future. If I can add, and if the concern is about coastal protection provisions, that the, the water course setback that applies, there is in the drafts, a water course setback, and on the coastal areas, it applies to the top of bank, and the idea is that that would be, you know, a crude tool to worry about erosion. If that is what the concern is about, that is not specific to the S1 zone, is more broad to the whole coast, and that may be something that's worth discussing, if, if that is the concern.
Through you, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Counselor Palmer.
My concern is, to Debbie's point, I, I know, and by having a general, like the general zone, it's not going to change what's there now. It's going to be consistent, even though that you can do whatever you want, but those properties are so valuable that you're not going to have an auto body repair shop or anything like that there. People want to put their homes and cottages on and things like that. My concern is where we're regulating this lot, but we're not regulating this lot, and they're side by side. And, and that's where- And and that's where I think that we'd be in trouble, the inconsistency that if we had it all as S one, then then I could see it. But where you have, you're just picking and choosing what lots because this, these lots have a private road going into it, but this road just has a driveway going into it. Or this lot just has driveway going into it. So to me, that's too much inconsistency and people are saying, well, he, well, I can either do that and I can't do that. But I don't think it'll change a whole lot down that area because of the of the way it is and the and and the expense of those lots. So and and then this council has talked about coastal protection. Well, that's another discussion for another day. It's it's too large to bring up at just one meeting here. It's something that we have to sit down and discuss if we're gonna do it or if we're not gonna do it. We gotta get information from the province, what they, what they're saying, we can do and what we can't do. So. But my my thing and my point about bringing it up, when you look at the map and you look along Debbie's shore, if you wanna look along some of your shore, you'll have S one, then you have general, right? Then you have S one, general. To me, I I don't think we should pass this bylaw with the inconsistency that it shows. So.
Go ahead, Counselor Warden.
I'm just afraid that putting the G one rural along the whole coast sets a lot of of concern because right now if a neighbor has a dispute with a neighbor, they threaten to put a meat farm in or something along this line. That gives them the opportunity to do that, to maintain that. And I'm hoping that the zoning takes some of that threat situation away. And and so I don't think it's good to to zone it all G one rural.
Just on that though, all those other, those other lots are G one.
Yeah.
So it's the ones with the S one can't do that, but the ones right beside them can do.
I'm not comfortable with the G one rural rating along that coast.
You can put a G two there, but it allows more.
So could it all?
Is there some kind of a community core? Is is that, is that what S one would give them would be a community core?
So could all, could it all be S one? Then then it would protect, you wouldn't have what Counselor Palmer's talking about with the uh inconsistency if it was all S one. But you know, that limits the amount of construction that can take place along a shore so that we don't become.
Well, I just don't think, even the S one is not the right ruling for that area. I don't think G one rural is and I'm not so sure. The S one total ruling is, it just, I don't think it's conducive to that area for what we do in that area.
S one is not conducive to the shore?
Neither one really do the trick for the area uh in general, in the whole area. Because it is a community. It's a community of residences. And I don't wanna have the risk of heavy industrial being able to go up in there. And I don't want the risk of cutting off all land development down there. So where's the medium in in there?
Would S one cut off the land development? It's two, you're allowed two instead of four per uh per lot?
Uh it's sad enough, but I don't know.
Yeah, or how much do you want?
This is a major change too from what we took out to the public.
Yeah, both are. You know, to make it all G one or to make it all S one, right now what's been, what's been taken out to the public is you know, a mix is, which is what Randy's talking about. So I don't know how you uh how you get just that ideal, you know, of what you're looking for. It's not S one and not G one, then what is it, you know?
But yeah, but if we're changing something that drastic tonight, the the people that did um send in their comments, does that give them, they'll have to wait till the hearing for the second hearing?
Probably pushes your head, yeah. Uh but we, the most important thing is to do the right thing here. I think if it has to be longer, then it has to be longer, but we need to be sure of what we're doing, that it's the right thing that we're doing, I guess.
I guess I could ask Ian that, what what his recommendation is for that area where it's, where it's a lot of residential.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Uh to Counselor Warden. Um I think, you know, at this stage in the game, my recommendation would be to keep it as is, just from a perspective of uh this is what the public has seen. Uh and we did hear a lot of comments on the on the shoreline zone as as part of the engagement. Uh I'm sure councillors did as well. Um and in many cases, I think we were able, uh at least to the people we were able to talk with to to address a lot of the concern. That was a handful of individual owners. That's not to say there's not wider concerns out there. Um certainly, we could take an approach of making areas all one or the other. I think if I was doing this again today from the very start, uh you know, and we were talking about the G two zone, I would consider that for the whole coastline, you know, on the north side of the road, of the main roads of each coastline. Um but my concern at this stage of things is that um the, you know, the only chance people will have to see that and have a say on it would be uh at the public hearing, which is, it's just quite late.
So we're left with a motion on the floor to uh to get rid of the S one totally and return it or put it all G one. Uh and go ahead, Counselor Palmer, or somebody?
Just, just with the exception of, like, with the water shares, with the exception of the water shares.
With the exception of the water shares. Okay, I remember you saying that. Uh go ahead, Counselor Thompson.
Thank you. Uh I guess some of the stuff we're we're trying to do here is already being accomplished through other regulation. Like that's what I'm I'm puzzled by when we restrict the number of of dwellings we can put on a lot on a shoreline where where it should be based on what capacity can you do? Do you have enough water? Do you, can you treat your wastewater? Um and can you put a proper road in? Uh but I think just listening to this conversation is, I I think we're better, I agree with with Counselor Palmer's motion that we should remove this. It's not to say that we shouldn't come back and examine it, but I think if we step in into this sort of a hodgepodge of properties along the shoreline depending on on which zone you're in, I think it's, I think it's gonna cause a lot of headaches. And um do we have the staff to do all this work? That's the other question I have. For for all of this planning that we're doing, do we have a proper complement of staff to enforce whatever rules we have going on?
Counselor McHale.
Uh thank you very much, Mr. Warden. Um I I understand completely why Counselor Palmer brought this forward because we need uniformity. And we don't, the last thing we need to do is pit neighbor against neighbor. We need fairness. And I believe that it's either all S one along the shoreline or it's all G one. However, we cannot have, we have spent a lot of time and a lot of money going towards the public and showing them these maps and asking for feedback. And for us to come here tonight and totally change what we put forth to the public, I think is not unacceptable. I understand that we wanna get it right and we wanna do a good job on it, but I think that we have to be um reminded of of, you know, of the people and what they've seen and what they've commented on. And to go and change it, such a drastic change in the ninth hour, I I don't think is very um cognizant of the people. So I agree that it all has to be painted with the same brush a- along the shoreline uh for fairness and equity and making sure uh to take that um you know, kinda tit for tat in that that a way. But I I I think it's um without consultation of the public and and such a drastic change, I I'm not quite sure how I feel about that. It doesn't sit right with me. Thank you.
Counselor McDonald.
Yes, in my district, it's very like mixed too. I mean, all this, most of Lismore is area in the shore. Ponds and that stuff are blue for shoreline protection. And you get up into Marigamish and that stuff, harbor and that stuff. It's all G one, other than little specks here and there. I mean, how do you tell somebody in Lismore that they can't have this, but the people in Marigamish can? Like this, for example, there's P twos there in Lower Branch River and that stuff. What happens if somebody wants to do that down in Lismore or something? Uh it just doesn't make sense to me that you can say, these people can have this and these people can't.
Okay, I'm gonna let Ian see if he can uh address that uh question from uh Counselor McDonald.
Yeah, through, thank you, Mr. Chair. So I I think, I mean, in general, I think this exercise is drawing lines on a map and and based on local context of of what's suitable in different areas and seeing some people have certain uh zones than others don't um based on the context. Um in any of these areas, uh you know, people can certainly request a rezoning uh at, through council. Uh so for things like those P two zones, we've recognized existing commercial recreation uses. So that's applied to, those P two zones are applied to things like campgrounds and RV parks, that sort of thing. If someone wanted to uh also have that zoning, they could certainly apply to the municipality to do that. Um so that's generally the process. You know, we we do draw lines on a map and and then uh if that needs to be tweaked in the future, uh there's a process to do that.
Okay, thank you. Um any further comments, questions uh on this? Go ahead, Deputy Warden Murray.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Ian, if this motion goes through, would that mean that we'd have to go back to the public? Or not?
Uh through you, Mr. Chair, uh to the Deputy Warren. Uh no, it, well, it would, no. Um it it wouldn't uh have to go back to the public, uh other than, you know, this document tonight, if you give it first reading, is moving forward to the public hearing. So there is a public comment period there. The only thing is it's, you know, it's not the same extensive engagement as you do with the drafts. It's come to council and and have your say sort of thing. So um there would be a chance for the public to see it, but it wouldn't be extensive. Uh for better or for worse.
So could that be changed like to residential only? Would have to be a new zone?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Uh we don't, I mean, that's essentially what the shoreline zone achieves is is residential only with a few supportive things that people told us they wanted in their communities like marinas and and restaurants and that sort of thing. Um I don't, we don't necessarily have another zone in the draft to uh to take the place of these areas uh other than rural, general or or rural mixed use.
Okay, so I guess we've heard from Ian what his recommendation was and what uh from Counselor Palmer, what his concerns are. Um it it does make it somewhat more difficult if we're only, the public's only kick at the can type of thing becomes at the public hearing where the, it's not as open as our community meetings and whatnot where. So if we change it, uh what effect is that going to have? So that's a decision, I guess, for council to make. Uh I think we've heard the two different perspectives, the inconsistency and the, you know, sticking with what we have uh for, and it can be changed. Uh I think that applies all through all of the zones and people can come here to council on most things and say, well, I'd like to, you know, do this or that. And we have to decide whether that, if somebody wants to start a new firm in the middle of Lions Brook. You know, we would have to vary from what we're doing for sure, or a lot of other things. But uh you know, I know what you're saying, I guess, Ian, about that's the job of the planner, is to draw the lines and uh the, I guess maybe people would have been happier if they were all S one, but then maybe we're limiting the development uh in Marigamish or whatever that could have taken place there uh because they weren't this is S one. So it's it's not an easy one and it's being uh down to the wire here, I guess, on our timing and everything. I'm not suggesting we should make the wrong decision because of timing, but uh we are getting near the the finish line. So I don't see any more hands. So I I think, oh, sorry, Darla, go ahead.
Um thank you very much, Mr. Warden. I guess um my question is about this change being brought up tonight. Is this something that was brought up at the Land Use Planning Committee? Or is this something that, I guess, upon reflection was just noticed and saw as a red flag?
Uh okay, I'm gonna ask Counselor Palmer to respond to that, I guess.
I did bring it up at the, at the Planning Advisory Committee.
Mm-hmm.
My concern over the inconsistency, yes. So it was brought up.
So is that coming from the committee?
It was my concern and
I don't think we had a vote on it.
We didn't have a vote on it.
So it's Counselor Palmer's concern. He, I agree, he did bring it up at that meeting, but I didn't think there was any vote. Uh so that's the best answer we can give you on that is that it's a concern he has and he's bringing it over here tonight and we're gonna vote on it now. So the motion again uh is to do away with the S, oh, sorry. Uh go ahead, Joe.
Uh if we have have to go back to count or after this S one's stitch, situation is in a spot and then you go back to changing it, zoning and that stuff, rezoning and that stuff, we've seen in council that it takes two, couple, two or three years in some zones, like the subdivisions and that stuff. Is that gonna be a cost to the homeowners and that stuff and landowners too?
Through you, Mr. Chair. So typically for a rezoning, um we'll make recommendations about this as part of our, as part of our scope as well as kind of that admin side of things, staffing, processes, fees, all that sort of stuff. Typically for a rezoning uh application, I would usually see municipalities have a, you know, a nominal fee anyways to to offset some of the staff time for a rezoning. But that's certainly, you know, at the direction of council, I would expect in terms of what your goal for that application process is. Um and that's a, for context, that's a process typically that takes in a rural municipality um four to six months, I would say.
Go ahead, Joe.
Uh so if somebody's goes in to one of these properties that's G G one now along the shore and goes in there and builds a few cottages or something in there, will they become S one too in the future?
Uh through you, Mr. Chair. Not automatically. Um that would have to come at, as an amendment to the to the land use bylaw. Uh so either they could require, you know, they could come and request shoreline zoning. They could say, I have this rural subdivision that I want protected and I want to put S one zoning on it. So they would uh request rezoning and go through that process. Or um if in future plan reviews, this is a, you know, the shoreline zone is a direction that you continue to go and you revisit it and and refine it, you may pick up those, you know, you may say, we've had these rural subdivisions since the last plan. Uh now we're looking at our zoning as a whole again. Let's go revisit the zoning on these these properties and we may update it. But it wouldn't just happen automatically.
Okay, and Counselor McHale.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Um I'm kinda struggling with this decision because, you know, I I just, I I'm not sure um on how I feel. Uh my my question would be through you, Mr. Warden, to Ian, speaking about municipalities, obviously, you know, you guys have had the had other municipalities that you've done the same um work for. Is this something that is standard across the board? This is normal, what it looks like for municipalities with shoreline? Or is this something that um, I guess I know everybody does things differently, but in your experience in the municipalities that you've done so far in Nova Scotia, is pretty standard across the board or is they, have they done other things? Thank you.
Go ahead.
Through you, Mr. Chair, to Counselor McHale. Yeah, I mean, uh obviously every municipality uh has its, has its nuances, but I do see shoreline zoning pretty common around inland lakes in rural municipalities in in Nova Scotia. Um then the coastal areas, it's uh some municipalities do um here and there. It's not as common, I would say, but it's certainly not uncommon either. Uh so it it does exist in other municipalities.
Counselor Turner. Oh, sorry. Go ahead.
Um I guess my question was, is, I wasn't clear. Does their S ones look sporadic as ours are um in our mapping? Like I know District Three. Um you know, there's it, there's a lot of blue and then there's a lot of white and then there's, you know, very
and then there's, you know, very concentrated areas. Is, is our mapping of our S ones with that inconsistency standard to what other municipalities have done across Nova Scotia?
You're the chair. Okay. I think it depends on their criteria that they use to establish the coastal areas. Some municipalities would just say a blanket X distance from the shoreline goes into some sort of shoreline zoning. Others would take this approach of, you know, private road subdivisions. I was just trying to find my zoning map for Anna Ganesh. I can't, if you give me a second, I can, I can bring it up and see what we did there.
I'm just, the reason I'm asking is, is this something that, you know, if we're the only municipality in Nova Scotia who shoreline looks like this, maybe it's not a good idea, but if this is, you've, other municipalities have looked at this and this is quote unquote the status quo of what other municipalities have done.
Through you, Mr. Chair. I can't, like, off the top of my head necessarily point to specific examples to give you a solid answer one way or another, quite frankly, on that one. I'm trying to think areas that would have something like this.
I guess my reasoning would be, if, then why does ours look like this if, you know, Anna Ganesh's does not or Colchester up the shore does not? Why does, why does our shorelines look like this if theirs do not? If theirs are so, if it's very different, you know? I think, I'm just looking for consistency in the fact that, you know, I look at District Three here along the shore and it's
Sorry, I was just looking up at some of the other plans. So Colchester does not have it along their shoreline. It's just on the inland lakes. They've taken a more distance-based approach to coastal areas. Similarly, in Anna Ganesh, it's based on distance, not on private roads. I think the reason we took the approach we did here was we heard a fair bit of concern around the density of development and the amount of development on the private sub, private road subdivisions and the challenges that that's been causing. So we focused specifically on them because we knew they were areas that, A, had that concern and B, were areas that were predominantly residential, which suits the purpose of the zone. I don't see the same level of coastal private roads as in, for example, Colchester. They certainly exist. But the, that level that we see here, but no, you're, you're, this is a different approach than, for example, Colchester and Anna Ganesh is your neighbors.
Thank you. First of all, I want to thank you, Ian, for all the work that you've done and the company that you've engaged here. And thank you for your engagement in the communities. And I think this document is a reflection of what, what you've heard, right? And he's just trying to present to here as council what he's heard from the community and the concerns that the, that the citizens and the residents had ahead. And as, as he said, his job is to put lines on a map. And it's not perfect, but I think we have to, from my perspective, take the advice and the wise counsel of Upland. And I've, there's gonna be changes here, but the process, and this is the second que, this is a question I have. The process, we have a built-in mechanism to amend this. So my question is, can you give us a schedule of how we go about amending this? And it's not a perfect document, it's a living document. In today's parlance, people talk about living documents. It's a living document. We'll be able to come back and revisit it and make the changes that are gonna be necessary, which will be given back to us from the residents, from the citizens. If it goes through and adopted, we'll live with it for a certain amount of time. The citizens and the residents will give us feedback, say, this is, this is good, this is not good. We accept this, we don't accept that. And then we have a schedule to amend this. Can you give me the schedule for amendments and how we go about doing that? Please, through you, Mr. Speaker.
Through you, Mr. Chair. So for amendments, amendments can come at any time as the result of a land, you know, request by a landowner. They'd be considered on a case-by-case basis for that individual property. On a larger scale of looking at the plan and land use bylaw itself, we're suggesting in the plan that within two years, you do a housekeeping review. You know, these documents are never perfect. There's always little things that come up when you start using them. So we suggest a two-year housekeeping review to catch any of those things that are, have caused problems or were missed when we did the drafting. Or, you know, in the practice of using it, people, people notice could be better. A five-year review for looking at bigger issues. And then a, and then you're legislatively required within 10 years to do a full review. That being said, too, that's, you know, kind of a recommended housekeeping or regular review schedule. Council can also, at their pleasure, initiate amendments to these documents in the future. So again, you know, if this does end up being a problem where you're hearing a lot about it, you could certainly also initiate an amendment. Not that I want to create more work for you in the future or whatever, but, but it could be done. Through you, Mr. Chair, to Council Bailey. So for any of those property owner-initiated changes where they request a change, it would go through a rezoning process. That would go presumably to your Planning Advisory Committee to review. They'd make a recommendation to council. Then council legislatively, legislatively has to hold a public hearing. So neighbors would get notified and would have a chance to have a say, but ultimately it's council who makes the decision based on, on the merits of the proposal.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, I think that's the best thing to do. If we're doing it tonight, it's gonna be all done and then we're not gonna have to go, all the people that are gonna land here and it's gonna take, like he said, two months, four months, six months, or whatever. We put everything the way it is now and leave it that way. Get rid of S one altogether. Thank you.
Just to Council Bailey's point, he's right. We don't have any protection there now and I don't see it changing. So why not have consistency with the S one? And to, to make changes, the only way we'll make a change, like, right now you got the S one, so if you want to make the rest of the shoreline S one, well, that won't come into effect till we have another hearing and another thing. To me, I don't think we heard from a great deal of residents from, that live on the shoreline, if you want to know. I've, I've been to nine of the 12 public meetings and I just don't think the turnout was there for, to hear, to decide, for us to decide what the people that live along the shoreline want. Alls I'm looking for is consistency in that if you, if you have a property, two, two properties side by side can't have different zoning, as far as I'm concerned, if they're on the shoreline. They gotta be consistent and that's why I brought it up here tonight. I brought it up at, at community level and, and I probably should have put a motion on the floor back then, but, but after reviewing it more and, and looking at the map that I printed off, there was a lot of, lot of ones that are G one right next to two S ones. So I think for us to be, to have a plan going forward, we should have it all consistent. And if we look at shoreline protection in the future, then we can add that protection along the whole shoreline, not just a few properties here and there. So that, that was my point of bringing it up tonight.
And Council Warden.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just one thing to Council Palmer's point. I've heard from residents who are seasonal, who weren't aware this was even happening. So I'm not sure how we publicize to the people that live in other provinces, even live in Halifax, if they were notified that these changes are coming to the county. And I have a concern there because District Two is a lot of seasonal and they, a lot of them live on the water. So I do have that concern that they haven't had a chance to really let us know, because they're just finding out about it now. But secondly, I agree, we need consistency along the coast, but I don't think G one rural is the answer for the coast. I really don't, not for my area. I don't think that's the answer. So, and it's a major change. I still think it's a major change that the residents were not notified on. So for that reason, I just can't support the, the motion. Thank you.
Just a comment on that. We did try very hard at the climate change meetings and these meetings to try and notify people. And I heard from several people along the shore, down in the original area of Union District Two. And again, it was, I didn't even know these meetings were going on. I didn't hear anything. And I don't know how many things we'd have to do, especially if we started to try and reach out to Halifax or wherever these seasonal ones are from. We, you know, it's difficult enough in Picton County to reach out and get people aware that we're doing things, but if we started to reach out across the province, I'm not sure how we do that successfully.
But that's my point. Like, there's a lot of people not, not been able to put input into this. So we're making this decision, except we're making this decision based on the few people that made the comments.
Okay. You, you're like, you were turning it off, not on. Okay. Go ahead, Council Thompson.
Thank you. Just a brief comment. I'm, I don't want to be a map maker. We'll be drawing and redrawing these maps every time somebody wants to develop a piece of land. So I think the safest way to do this is to remove S one, review it and keep G one on there. And if the shoreline folks, if they wanna, if they wanna show an interest in coming out to a meeting or providing some type of questionnaire, however we reach them, that's what we have to do. But right now, we'll be, we'll be redrawing this map every time somebody wants to do something on the shore. It's just gonna, it's gonna take a lot of time.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions before we go for the vote? Good, let's go for the vote. We've been on this for a while. So the motion again, just to remind you, Randy's motion, second by Joe, is that we eliminate S one for the present time, which will follow it back to G one and that can then be appealed by people as well. So all those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. Okay, and nay votes, please raise your hand. Two, two nay votes. Okay, a motion carried. Now we'll move along. All we've done is dealt with one issue. Set your clocks at two o'clock in the morning. Oh, yes, I should have been, I, I think the, that's not to do with the, only on the coast. Not to do with around the lakes or other inland.
Everything except for the watershed.
Okay, it's for everything, I had that wrong. It's for everything except for the two watershed areas. Okay. Good thing I caught that, or you caught that. Okay, so are there other questions or concerns for Ian to do with any other aspect of this plan before it goes to second reading? If we pass it tonight first reading, it's more difficult to change it for sure at second reading. So are there any other areas of concern that anybody wants to bring up tonight? Go ahead, Council Donnie Parker.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. The residents of District Seven were out at the Union Centre Community Hall for the, for the bylaw meeting. We're very against this bylaw. They don't, they're not interested in having a bylaw telling them what they can do with their own land. And it's a very rural district and I understand where they're coming from. It's being forced on us by the province, I'm told. So I will not be supporting this bylaw, I can tell you that right now.
Okay, well, like you said, Council Parker, we do, we, we're obligated to do it by the province. We don't have a choice and otherwise we probably wouldn't be doing it because there wasn't any big demand from our citizens to get out there and get a plan ready, but we were told we had to. So Council Palmer.
Yes, I have one more and this is it. And it's to, and I brought this, yes, promise. I brought this up to the committee level and also at the, at the committee of the whole level. Signage. I don't believe that we as a municipality should be regulating signage. It'll be very time-consuming and I just don't think that we have the manpower to do it and we have, and people, in, in the bylaw it says, no person shall erect or relocate a sign without first obtaining a permit from the development officer and no permit to erect the sign shall be issued unless all the sign provisions of this bylaw are satisfied. Well, to have somebody come down here and say, well, what's, what's the bylaw, what do I have to do and all that and get a permit? They're just gonna put the sign up. The other thing in the thing is signs on public property or within public right-of-way, unless erected by a government body or unless written permission to do so has been obtained from the applicable government body. Well, that's highway right-of-way, right? So the Department of Public Works do not give a, issue permits for putting the signs up. They, they have no policy on it. So, and we can't regulate what's put on highway right-of-way anyway and that's where the majority of these signs are. They're on, on public property, right? So I just think it'll be a lot of time-consuming for our staff. You'll be getting a lot of calls and complaints from residents of, neighbor putting this sign up, is it regulated or not? I just think that, that we should remove it from the, from the bylaw and the municipal planning strategy. So I'll make that a motion. So I'll make that a motion.
Okay, and is somebody going to second that motion? Okay, second by Counselor McKeel, moved by Counselor Palmer that we remove the signage section totally, is what I'm hearing. So do you have any comments on that first, Ian? Is this something that's commonly done in other municipalities again, as Counselor McKeel asked, or not? Or what's the effect going to be?
Yeah, three, Mr. Chair. Signage regulations are typical, but they're certainly not something you have to have in your regulations. It's a tool. Often for the worst, you know, for, to deal with when you have bad cases of it and someone complains, you have a tool available. But that doesn't mean you do have to respond when someone complains, because you have a regulation. So it is one of those things that, certainly not an essential part of these documents. And if it's not council's will to regulate this aspect of development, then you certainly do not have to.
Okay, I'll just make a personal comment here that I'm not against the motion. The big thing that bothers me about signage all the time is the ones that get left out. And this maybe wouldn't help that anyway, I don't know. But, yeah, you drive through our countryside, and you see all kinds of signs telling you there's a market down here, or an antique place here, or, you know, a tenting place somewhere else. And so you follow those roads, looking for them, and there is none. It's gone. It was gone for 10 years, in some cases, but the sign was good quality, so it still stands. So this may not have helped that anyway, but it's a big problem, I think, for tourists especially, you know, that don't know their way around. They're following these signs that, you know, it, there's a problem there. But I know the province has tried to regulate signage a number of times. I've gone to a number of meetings over the last 25 years where, you know, all signs on the trans Canada were basically going to disappear by a certain date, but it never happened. There was so much backlash, I think, that they decided not to carry through with it. So signage is a really difficult one. Businesses need signage, tourism industry needs signage, but there's no laws to take them down, for sure. And dispute between neighbors happens pretty easy. When your sign blocks the visibility of the neighbor looking down the road to see if there's any traffic coming, and so there's lots of problems can develop with signage, for sure. What's the opinion of council, then, on this motion? Does anybody want to speak on this, one way or the other? Or go ahead, Counselor Palmer.
I just want to, the Department of Public Works does have a policy on 100 series highways. There's signs that were grandfathered in because they were there prior to this, but any new sign has to be 1,000 meters off the highway right-of-way. So that's why you see a lot of signs way off at the Mount Tom, things like that, because they're, but when you come into other areas that aren't regulated, there are signs closer, so.
I just wonder if they, when a new business takes over, or somebody else takes that signage that was there and that business closed, are they grandfathered still? Because some of them seem like they've changed the name on them, but they're still closer than that distance.
No, as far as 100 series highways here in Picto County, I think most of them are 1,000 meters off or more.
Okay, and well, as you go south to Halifax, yeah.
In Halifax area.
There's maybe a different policy.
It's Stewac area, it's a little different.
Okay, I'm getting off track here, anyway. Any comments on the motion, or questions on the motion before I call the vote for it? Everybody wants to go home? Okay, well, call the vote. I'll wait now, no. Counselor Boils, I didn't see your light.
Yeah, it's another issue.
Oh, not signage? Okay, all right. Everybody done on signage?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, go ahead, Randy, with the motion.
I guess the motion is to remove the signage from the municipal planning strategy and land use bylaw.
Okay, just to remove it totally, so that's pretty simple. All those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. Now I'll get to Peter.
Yeah, my problem is with the whole thing is the protection part. I mean, one district's going to have protection, which I don't blame them, go for protection if that's what, you know, they think they need. But what about the rest of us? I mean, you know, it sounds something like, you know what I mean, Quebec in Canada. They get all this protection and what they're supposed to get, and the rest of Canada got to go with a different route. So I just, myself, it worries me there on protection. Like, why is it, you know, that we're not protected too in District 9 as well as anywhere else?
But can you be more specific, Counselor Boils? What protection are you talking about? What type of protection?
Well, any protection. Like, if they turn around, they say about when they're worried about, you know, body shops coming in here, or junkyards going here, or this coming here, or that going there, it's the same thing. We should have, if one district has it, the other district should just be, have as much protection. I mean, it could be when it comes back here, if somebody just wants to put something like that on, and the people, residents, say, "Yeah, okay," and we bring it back, well, then it could be changed. But we should still, if there's going to be protection, should, everybody should have it.
I think the G1 zone is pretty open to just about everything, and if part of your area or part of anybody's area, you want more protection, then it would have to be put in a different zone. G1 allows you, what I'm seeing, to do just about everything. So it would have to be a different zone, and maybe not for all your area in order to protect it from one of those things. Do you want to speak to that, Ian?
Yeah, I certainly can, Mr. Chair. So I think when we did, you know, when we took out to these, this project out to the public, we heard kind of a huge spectrum of opinions. On one hand, I think we heard many comments that echoed what Counselor Donald Parker said, that people don't want any regulation, they want to be able to do what they can. And on the other end of the spectrum, we heard people wanting protection, you know, that they're not going to have a factory pop up in their backyard. So trying to balance those two ends of the things, in some areas, in the more rural areas, that G1 zone is fairly wide open. You know, some of the heavier and industrial stuff needs that development agreement process. Scrapyards would require rezoning, but otherwise, we've been fairly flexible in response to those concerns about, you know, regulation. As we get into the more serviced areas, sewer serviced areas, we heard a lot more concerns about conflict and impact and the desire to be protected from that. So we've, the zones are more strict. And they're also more strict recognizing the context of, you know, you have sewer in the ground, and that's an investment, and we want to use that in certain ways to maximize that investment. So it's partially a protection piece, but it's also a making use of our infrastructure. So there is that spectrum, kind of very much to respond to the spectrum of what we heard from the community and the engagements.
Okay, thank you. And we do always have, can always bring before council, you know, in a certain area, if you want to change their zoning, for any part of our area, it does not have to be our whole area, just like we were talking about District 8, you know, some will be different than, downtown Everecrom is going to be different than Granton Road, that's for sure. And different areas are going to be different, but we can change any of this as the, call it a living document, means you can change it. Go ahead, Counselor McKeel.
Thank you very much, Mr. Warden. I do have just a few, I guess, points to make, three actually. I guess when we first started doing this exercise of minimal planning, it was very much my opinion that we needed minimal planning. And that, you know, I also heard from many residents that had the same opinion as Counselor for District 6, opinion as well. And to be honest, I'm not far off of that. So I will ask Ian, if through you, Mr. Warden, is this planning actually minimal? Would you consider this actual minimal planning as we had talked about around the council table?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I would say, I mean, there's, yes, in the context of Nova Scotia's plans, of all the plans I've written, this is certainly the most minimal. And it's the closest to the minimum requirements you could have and still meet the mandate of the province and the statements of provincial interest. There are some things that are, you know, aren't totally minimal, because we did, through the engagement here from people, that they wanted protections. They, you know, it wasn't a blanket, "Don't tell me what I can do with my land." There were people who said, "Oh, I can't believe we don't even have zoning, and I have no protections from what can go next to me." So we did hear from areas, we did hear from counselors who wanted some level of protection. So, you know, that does exist in these documents, but in the grand scheme of planning in Nova Scotia, this is quite minimal.
Okay. And I guess my follow-up question that would be tonight, as you had mentioned in your, in speaking there, that we have to get approval from the province. Is there anything tonight in any of the changes that we made that gives you pause, that we may not receive that approval?
Through you, Mr. Chair. No, and actually, I would say the change that we made to the Picto watershed should probably strengthen our case with the province, I would say.
Okay. And I guess the last point I want to make is that I'm a little concerned about enforcement on this. I guess my question is to Brian, are we, do we have plans to expand our department? Because right now, there's only, we only have one planner. And he seems quite busy right now. So is there, how are we going to enforce, and how are we going to move ahead with this going forward internally? Thank you.
Go ahead, Brian.
Sure. So right now, there isn't a intention to hire additional staff at this point. There will be a, I guess, part of a report that will come to the municipality through, I guess, through Upland to kind of outline that process for us. A lot of this is ticking boxes, right? The more complex issues around zoning, rezoning, and things like that do require input of a planner, which we do not have on staff. We do not have a planner on staff. We have a development officer on staff. So we'll look to engage planner either through third-party contract or something of that nature, kind of thing, so.
Any more comments in general from the plan before we, as I said before, we move to second reading and, oh, I have a light, sorry. Joe, go ahead.
Just one question to have. So with the being moved right amongst the S1s, is there still the stipulation that you only got two buildings per lot, like dwellings? Not little buildings, but dwellings?
Through you, Mr. Chair. No, so those areas would now be in the G1 zone, as per the motion, and the G1 zone allows up to four dwellings per lot.
And is that the same with drive, cars in the driveway and that stuff, too? Four, something like that?
That was for parking lots, I think.
Yeah, through you, Mr. Chair. We wouldn't regulate the number of cars that someone have through these. There are standards for parking lots that are larger than four spaces. So if you had a development and you centralized it all in a parking lot that had four spaces, there's some basic standards about access and stuff like that. But that's for the actual construction, and that's only if you centralized it. If it was four separate driveways or whatever, it wouldn't necessarily apply there.
Okay, thank you. Christmas can go on. Thank you.
Christmas can go on, yeah. You're supposed to cancel Christmas, we're getting in trouble here. So again, I think, you know, we are, as Counselor Palmer referred to earlier, you know, we will need to be going back to the coastal area in terms of coastal protection, making decisions on what we're going to do with anything and how. And so that may have to be worked into our plan at some time if we do that. But there's also concerns, because we had a meeting in Little Harbor just last week for the climate change, concerns about wanting to have a safety plan to, in case they, you know, need to get out of there in a hurry in case of fire. And so that's still a concern. So we have a number of concerns, you know, along the coast yet that could cause us to have to look at some of these things again. Certainly, I believe Evan is going to help out some in terms of trying to help them develop a plan for the, you know, fire accidents. Not only the coastal areas, all areas have to be aware of that, but they were particularly concerned, I know, when we were down there a week ago, or roughly a week ago. Any more, oh, we do, Joe, your light is off, okay. Any more concerns or questions about our plan before it goes to the next stage? We're going to vote on it here tonight. Go ahead, Counselor Boils.
I guess the only one that pops up again is that I heard when this all first started that they tried to do this years ago, and our veterans were alive then, and our veterans put the run to them. So they turned around and they, it didn't go too far at all. And now down the road, it just seems like what they fought for, for a free country and a free, you know, enterprise is being taken away, and we're going to support it. But I'm saying, I won't be supporting it.
Okay, and that, I remember very well in the 70s, the episode you were talking about, but it was a much different kettle of fish. It was long ways from minimal. You know, it was almost maximal to where farmers were told they couldn't allow their son or daughter to put a lot up in the corner of the hayfield to build a hose on. And that was, that was just the tip of the iceberg. But we've gone around and, you know, tried to be as open as we can, as Counselor Wood said. We didn't reach everybody. I know we didn't, and I don't think we ever will. But we did try to be as open and transparent as we could. This was forced on us. We didn't do it on our own free will, but we have to do the best we can within the restrictions that the senior-level government has put on us. And it wasn't the present government, it was back in 2018 or 19. So that's what we're living under, and I think it is quite a bit different than what it was in the 70s, because everything blew up then. I haven't heard that kind of reaction yet. Maybe it's still to come, I don't know. But when we went around the communities, we didn't hear that type of reaction. And I think it was mostly because Ian and Upland did a good job of trying to accommodate individuals who had concerns. I think a particular farmer in Lions Brook that had all kinds of concerns, and was he going to be able to sell his land down the road? Was he going to be able to expand, or all those? He got answers to all of those questions, and I think that wasn't forthcoming back in the 70s. It was just, here it is and live with it. So I think because of the amount of public input that we have had, accepting the fact that many probably didn't get their say. But I think, I'm hopeful that there'll be not that same kind of uproar, but I know that there's people out there, and I know them well, that are against this. And, but in the end of the day, again, it's a requirement for us to do it, and I think it's done as, as Counselor McKeel, as light as possible. So I think we can't ask for more than that, and if the province turns it down, then we'll have to have another look at it. But I don't think they will, because I think we've addressed the areas that they required. But is there going to be, you know, feedback? Is there going to be opposition? Certainly. I don't think you could ever put something like this through. When you're telling people what they can or cannot do on their own property, it's always going to be difficult. So we've never had a plan before, other than our wind towers and our subdivisions. So, yeah, there's definitely going to be opposition. Why wouldn't there be? I'd be surprised if there wasn't. So, but we have to, as a council, try and balance between, as Counselor Boils, you said about protection, and on the other hand, freedom, to do what you want on your property. And every, it's always going to be an up and down, because it's going to, what you do affects somebody else. But in the end of the day, we have to try and do the best for all of our citizens, and I do believe that's what we're trying to do tonight. So I'm going to call for the vote on, oh, sorry, I missed one. Go ahead, Counselor Wood.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to say that I do have reservations about some of the things that are in these documents, but I still feel strongly that the county does need land use bylaws and zoning. So I will be supporting it for that reason, and then knowing that we can change it, if things do become difficult or people need to have it changed. But I do think the documents are necessary, and I thank Upland for all the work they did for this. Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, call it quick. Okay, the vote on the strategy- Uh, okay, the vote on, uh, strategy, uh, and the bylaw, first reading, all those in favor?
Aye.
I, I missed the words, as amended, sorry. As amended. Uh, so, then, all those against?
Aye.
Okay, see the hands for against? One, two, three against. Okay, I thank you. Uh, was there, yeah, we still had a little left on that agenda, didn't we?
Yes, community announcements.
Is that the only thing? I lost my page here, there it is. Uh, community announcement, does anybody have community announcements? Go ahead, Peter.
Yeah, uh, on, uh, February the ninth at, uh, 2:00 PM, uh, there'll be an information meeting at the, uh, La Nissie Fire Hall at two o'clock regarding the response time it is on, on summer and winter conditions, uh, for our fire departments or our CMP and our ambulances, uh, and, um, the, uh, DOT and, and the, uh, the, uh, well, our own emergency response. E- everything is, is invited to turn around and see if we can find out a better way to keep our roads clear.
That's the La Nissie Fire Hall, okay. Uh, any further public announcements? Yeah, go ahead, Council Boiles.
Uh, just, uh, shout out again to the Bridgeville Community Club, they're doing a winter warm-up, so if Chester can sneak down the Elgin Road on February twenty-second between four and six PM, five dollar admission, chili roll and ice cream dessert.
I'll have the ice cream.
And, uh, there's gonna be entertainment there, uh, with the, the amazing Petra Moriarity.
Yeah, that was February twenty-second?
Twenty-second, four to six PM.
Go ahead, Joe.
Uh, the Lismore Wintertime Review Breakfast is, except, or both of these things are on the, uh, February fifteenth, the Revert- Review Breakfast, and after breakfast, you can get your tickets for the Ru- Ru- the Lismore Wintertime Review. From eight to ten is breakfast and ten to twelve is the ticket sales. And that night, there's trivia at the Mayor Commission Community Center. Thank you.
Eight to ten is breakfast and ten to twelve is the ticket sales. The ticket sales. You usually sell everybody, huh?
Yes, they do.
Is there gonna be any tickets as well?
The tickets...
Oh, they actually start then, so you walk all the way down to hundred and so forth.
Yes.
Okay, uh, any other...
You must not be able to see that light, can you?
No, not in that angle.
Anyway, just wanted to, uh, let you know that, uh, the Everecrow Arena is, arena's in the Craft Hockey View, Hockey View Contest. Uh, you can go to District Thirteen website and there's thing how to, the more hits that you get and letters and pictures you get, the more votes you get, so... So that's, uh, that's up till March second, you can do that stuff, so if anybody wants to go on the district's website, there's a link there that you can go and vote, so, and you can add a story or anything like that. Plus, we have somebody that's gonna do a video that's coming out very shortly, so we're very pleased with that too, so, anyway, thank you.
Okay, the votes now?
And we're gonna have a rally on February the, or March the first, just the day, day before, yeah.